Change the venue. No more football. We try to be healthy. Is that what it is? We went around the stadium.
One, one slept in the entire stadium. So we went there and they were all, the buns were stale, they were all hard. They gave me a chili, they gave me a, I ordered Chicago.
What, Chicago?
They put sauerkraut on it.
That's wrong.
Cheese sauce on it.
That's wrong.
I don't call you.
So impressed. So we've had, uh, pretty few.
Hey, I kinda matched you.
I was pretty happy because it's still the office.
I was gonna say, if you didn't have a chamber of commerce on it. I put some pajamas.
Christie and Mike's.
What is on my back?
Jersey Dukes and I was raised water. And, well, I'll tell you later.
Yeah, I'm working at the memo.
What?
The blue shirt memo?
I get to court today.
Call it coordinated.
It's for the lives.
Oh, yeah.
Living gold.
Yeah. There you go.
The transportation sales tax.
Try it out. It's not gonna rework it. They're not gonna rework it. It's just gonna happen.
I mean, if anybody's going, that's gonna be bought, so.
I represent the president pro tem of the senate and this house sponsor.
Did you get this?
I need agenda here.
Twenty-six, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Great decision.
I didn't bring my computer in. I didn't think we was gonna be here that long.
We shouldn't be. You ready, Betty?
I am.
Cool.
Call commissioner or give him his reports.
Do, I have the sheriff's case for me was filed yesterday with me.
Uh, commission, committee reports and announcements of, um, indoor events, leaderships tomorrow.
Oh, crap.
I'm not gonna make it.
Me either.
Chamber board meeting was last Tuesday. They, uh, we're gonna take up our economic development contract, but unfortunately, they spent so much time talking about other stuff that I had to leave before. They got to that, so I don't know if they, they approved it or not.
Seen it back?
I don't know.
They did, however, uh, approve endorsing the across the river, River Walk project Alan Luddy had brought to them. Also, I've got a notice from MAC about the prepaid legal services program. If you guys wanna see it.
I think it got emailed to us, didn't it?
Yeah, yeah, you want it?
We don't ever use it. Unless you want a good laugh.
Okay, thanks for that. I think that's all I had. Oh, we do have the chamber contract. What do you know? They signed off on it.
Nobody wants to go in the morning.
Got it right here.
It's come from Monday.
We'll have to approve that at some point. Okay. Approval of our tourist contracts, first time on the agenda. Do you copy that? Everybody's had a chance to see it, review it. If there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So I moved.
Second.
Motion second, call roll, please.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, uh.
I'm sorry.
I know I'm gone in six months and a few days, but you can at least wait, you know, it's a hundred eighty-eight days. It's a hundred eighty-eight days. I got left here.
You all going to the fifty-four stadium meeting today?
Oh, yeah, forgot about that.
The what?
Yes, I'm gonna try.
Fifty-four stadium? Yeah, I don't know for sure. I'm gonna be able to make it.
It's the, uh, uh, public meeting on fifty-four stadium, Christie, what else are you missing? Jefferson, that whole little corner.
So I got a question. Um, I mean, we've approved this arch tourist thing and then I'm seeing some stuff on the, uh, MMRPC and whatnot about making the Witten Expressway six lanes through downtown. Are they gonna plan that going forward with the Lafayette interchange? Is that gonna be six lanes wide?
That's assuming that, that sales tax passes in August.
Right.
Um, the, the long-term project is to add a lane, so.
Just one lane?
Yeah, one lane, so.
Both ways or?
What?
Both ways?
Both ways. Lane on each side both ways to allow the traffic to flow through and then bring a bridge at Madison over the highway. So all the southbound traffic would come in without having to stop at fifty.
So basically, that environmental impact study we did years ago is nothing?
No, actually, that is the environmental impact study.
No, because they were gonna go over top of everything except for one of them.
They had two options.
Cause that's what I thought we was basically gonna push for.
The EIS that we paid for had two options. One was to go completely over the top. The other was to widen the road, um, take out the Madison Street turn, extend the turn lanes on the other, sort of longer lanes to make left turns. Uh, add a lane and run that all the way through, bring Madison Street over the top, and that was the one that ultimately moved forward.
I remember that one.
Cause that's the, that's the sixty million dollar option as opposed to the hundred fifteen million dollar.
I was looking at the billion dollar option to bypass it.
My question is, is, are they gonna build Lafayette and Jackson so that it can accommodate all that or?
It will tie right in.
Correct.
So, yeah, it won't be an issue there.
Basically, you'll get to the three lane once you get to where you have to turn and stuff. If you take Madison over, then they can make a straight shot, so. You come off fifty-four right into downtown. I mean, it'd be, it'll help, but I just, I wish I could just get over top of it and get through them lights cause it takes you less time to get from St. Thomas to Jeff City than it does to getting through the middle of Jeff City.
Okay.
Cause that's that ramp coming up.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So. It's not me, not my phone.
That's mine.
Discussion approval of phase two architects alliance agreement. Um, I think I circulated this out to you guys. This is their proposal and, and I just got it. When they sent this out Tuesday?
I saw it. I don't know what day it was.
Anyway, I had just gotten it, so I've not had a chance to even talk to Kerry about it in depth. Um, I assume, which is always dangerous, that the, uh, the fees that are in this are inclusive, are part of the overall estimate of what the kind of project costs. But I don't know that. I mean, if this is on top of the project estimates as opposed to out of the estimates, it's, they get down to a substantial.
How much was it?
Up to two hundred K. If that's part of.
As long as it's part of it.
Then it's not a big deal.
Yeah, that's part of the, the same with the, uh, arch tourist thing. If that was part of the.
So I, I would, I mean, I, if you guys are in general okay with it, I don't know that we won't vote it. Um, but if, if we're all okay that if it's part of the total amount, then we can take it up at the next meeting. We take it up and vote, prove it at the next meeting.
Yeah, find out.
If it's not part of it, then we have to sit back and I think we have to revisit it just, just the cost.
Yeah, I'm the same way as the arch tourist one. If that was on top, cause it's a big.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I mean, I mean, before we go through, forward with all this, we gotta know what the total number's gonna be.
So, you know, the last number that we had was in our budget or in, within the realm of what we could afford. We just have to stay there. And if this is on top of that number, we're then starting to get out of our. Getting very close to getting out of the budget realm, and I think we have to cautious about that. So I'll talk to Kerry, get a confirmation of it. Um, if it is in the realm, then I'll just bring it on the next agenda. If it's not, then I'll have him address it when he comes up, although I think that may be the next agenda.
I mean, phase one should get us to where we know what it's gonna totally cost, shouldn't it?
Yeah, phase one, the schematic, preliminary design schematic design ought to get us to full, an actual go number.
Okay.
So, all right, I'll talk to them about it. And we'll take it up next week. Approval of management representation letter. Kristen?
Um, I'm not sure you guys. Um, I'm not sure you guys wanna sign this today.
No standing. Okay, here you go.
We're up to a good start. Um, it was signing in on the condition that we filled in the date here and we were done.
Right.
Today with annual settlement. As of right now, we do not have an annual settlement. In fact, aren't Williams Keepers.
That would be you, Larry.
That would be me.
Hi, Larry.
So I'm responsible.
Uh, from my understanding, it's not you. It has to do with a certain contractor that you wanted.
Right.
I'm sorry. That was a cheap shot. I apologize. Well, not entirely, but I do.
Well deserved. Now, that was a cheap shot.
Yeah, I've had these discussions, so.
Our distributions, our collections and distributions are fine. I don't think there's any issue with that at all. The issue we're having is with the additions, corrections and abatements, and those are the things that come across the bridge. Uh, and those numbers aren't matching up yet, and hopefully we'll have that resolved yet today, but I, I can't guarantee that. DevNet has had someone here working on it since Monday. And we're close, but, but it's not where we think it should be. Kristen and I have both done the annual settlement and, uh, feel that very comfortable with the collections and distribu- distributions that we've taken in. We've distributed correctly. Uh, it's those numbers where the changes that came across the bridge. Uh, we're not sure if some of those were missed, if they were all, uh, that came across the bridge correctly, and, and that's the stuff we're trying to work back into.
Is it just, uh, I mean, is it the data that we're giving them that's causing the problems or?
I think it's the reports coming out of DevNet. Um, Williams Keepers actually brought in an IT auditor and we actually went through and tied out each individual payment in a month to the distribution. Uh, we ran into some issues where the assessor is doing a double change, so they'll delete an item and then they'll turn around and add an item instead of going in and editing. So there's two changes coming across and DevNet's reports are having a hard time calculating the difference of those two changes together. So they're coming across on reports incorrectly, even though the collections and distributions are correct. The reports that are coming out of their system are not. So when we're going back and pulling reports and trying to plug it into the annual settlement, it's not balancing out.
And, and we balance every month before we even make a distribution, so we know that, that our collections for that month, we're distributing a hundred percent of what we took in. I mean, that's, that's never been an issue from month to month, so.
I mean, I guess I'm just wondering, you know, is it something that's gonna be ongoing? Do they think they can get it fixed? Or is it, is it a combination of something the assessor's doing and the software or, I mean, do we know yet?
I don't, uh, we're still making changes to the bridges on both sides, uh, because of some of those issues. Anytime, you know, the, the bridge is set up to take stuff a specific way, and anytime they make a minor change to that specific way, it doesn't come across the bridge correctly. It, it can't anticipate what they mean to put in or, or anything like that. If they leave out a comma or they, uh, I mean, any slight little difference in, than what it's set up to accept throws it off, so. I, I don't know that we'll ever get a hundred percent away from that, but I think the issues we're having right now have a lot to do with the conversion of information. That was probably our biggest mistake. My biggest mistake was starting this in July rather than at the beginning of the collector's year, which would have been March first. But we wanted to be on it in time for tax season last year because of the, uh, ease of collecting taxes in the new system was much better than, than our old system. We just didn't anticipate the issues that came about with the reports for the annual settlement and, uh, and the amount of changes, how the, the assessor's office is again making, instead of editing it, a, a, uh, assessment record, uh, deleting the vehicle and then going back and adding it in, or, uh, it's, you know, not uncommon to receive several changes in the same day, so, on the same account, so.
I think there are going to be some comments in the management letter. Um, Williams Keepers is, um, holding off on issuing that part of the report. We were trying to get this done so we could have financial statements done for the cops reporting. Um, there are going to be comments about the collector system. We're just not sure at this point until they get the annual settlement how big those comments are going to be, whether they're going to be significant deficiencies or not. So really, they won't issue us an opinion until they get an annual settlement. And that's really the only thing we're still waiting on. We have drafts of everything else.
Just seems like it'd be pretty simple to require you to put stuff in a certain way or, or not let you enter it at all. I mean.
I think it's the bridge is probably the problem. I mean, it's the bridge, but it doesn't know how to handle it one way. If they were consistently doing it the same way, then I think the bridge would have no problem way it's at.
And I think DevNet does have some report issues that are.
Yes, definitely.
Um, we're having some issues where reports run today are not the same as if you ran them at the end of the month, so, um, there's some.
For the same time period?
Yeah, so there are some reporting issues on DevNet and where, um, things have changed.
Okay. Hopefully we'll get it resolved.
And be, just a side note now, because of this, uh, basically, since we can't have an audit report by June thirtieth, the major, uh, issue would be our bonding issue. We have to, because of that, we have to have an event notice that you guys basically have to approve and we get on record that, um, the audit's not ready yet. We'll get it to you as soon as we can. And the only thing, then if we would go out to refinance or do anything within the next five years, we have to disclose that every time we go. Is that how you understand it, Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Um, can't be helped. Does it happen in other county cities? Yes. So that's why they have this. Will it affect anything if we go out for refinancing in the next five years? I don't know that for sure. I would hope not. And I don't think we will be going out for refinancing in the next five years since we just refinanced our second one this year. So, basically, I probably need you to approve this event notice. It does ask for, um, time, when we think it might be ready. So I don't wanna put thirty days. If it's not thirty days, I don't wanna put.
Well, the same thing with this management rep letter. If we can get an annual settlement today, I mean, Williams Keepers is definitely willing to push on their end if they have to, but they're running out of time to test to turn around reports by Monday.
Understood.
So, I, I mean, I don't know if you want to contingently approve the management rep letter. If we have a, a settlement today and we can push it out, they can turn it around. They need this letter signed to give us reports.
I entertain a motion to approve the management rep letter conditional upon receiving the annual settlement by June thirty. So.
I like, I'll second for discussion.
Okay.
I have a real problem with people that have been doing an audit for six months now, and now all of a sudden, we're at the end of the time period and, and we come, now it's June twenty-fourth and now we're, now we got an issue.
This is not them.
It's not them. It's.
No, it's.
Well, I realize that. I, I understand that it's a dead net problem, but, you know, I guess Larry wasn't aware of it and, and maybe Williams Keepers is, is.
No, Larry was aware of it.
Okay.
Everybody was aware of it. We were just presuming that it would get done.
We, we've been told every, every week, you know, it'll be done tomorrow and you don't get it tomorrow.
So DevNet's telling us every week it's gonna be done tomorrow.
Right.
I, I have been.
Williams Keepers is waiting on them.
I'm waiting on them.
I have been pushing since March.
So really, I mean, Williams Keepers has been more than willing to, to push whatever they need to to get it done, and they can't do it until we give it to them.
And to be honest, Williams Keepers met with it probably three weeks ago was the first time I was brought in on it. And my concern was just finding out what it meant to our bonding, what it meant to, and I didn't report to you guys about that, cause again.
You told me about it.
It was every day it was going to get done, so.
Yeah.
It was kind of a no big deal this week.
We get all the time an email. It'll be done tomorrow morning. You don't hear anything in the morning, so you ask them in the afternoon, well, we'll get it to you tomorrow. And it, it just is a rolling.
So what are, I mean, what are the difference in the numbers? I mean, is it, is it substantial? Is it minuscule? Is it?
It is not material at this point. Um, we're about twenty-three thousand total between charges and collections.
And so why can't we just move it forward and note that this is a deficiency that we have to get corrected?
Um, we can do that. We can forward the annual settlement on to Williams Keepers at this point with the differences in there. Um, I think without trying to explain the differences, it's going to have a harder effect on us as far as their.
Their findings.
Yes.
And where I understand, even from the bonding, even from the people that purchased the bonds, to get a draft copy and then to draft copy changes is more, gives people more skepticism than to just wait and get your final numbers and be done, if that makes sense, cause these are investors, basically.
I mean, I'm, I'm very frustrated with DevNet. Um, I would like to send them a really nasty lawyer letter. Advising them that we will not pay them another dime until they solve this problem, and that if there's any exposure or liability or any cost to us regardless, including the next five years on our bond issues, that we reserve the right to sue them and recoup all that. And that by their, by their acceptance of the contract, they acknowledge that they are absolutely liable for their faults. I mean, I'm willing to hammer them hard because this is now an issue.
I agree.
Um, and, I mean, I think, you know, I hope they don't ever ask for a recommendation.
I know.
Cause the only recommendation I would give is don't hire them.
They have created a lot more work on our end for the audit this year that was unnecessary if their reporting was.
Is that them or is that the bridge?
Um, it really was them.
Okay, if we would've had DevNet doing. Both sides. Collector and the assessor, would it have been a problem with no bridge?
I can't say that absolutely that there would be no problem.
Okay, I'm just playing devil's advocate. I'm not staying up for DevNet. Uh, I mean, I was sold on their product too. From, from what I can tell, if we'd had them on both sides, we'd be even deeper in the doo-doo. Okay. Because then we'd be messed up on both sides of the equation. I'm looking at the bottom line, what it's gonna cost us.
I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that comment.
I think that it would be easier, but I'm not sure that all of the problems would be fixed with that.
But it'd be a hell of a lot easier if they had both sides of it and no bridge.
Um, I, it's an assumption on my end that that would've made things easier.
Most of the issues I think resolve around the corrections.
And how they're being handled.
And how they're being handled. If they were done in the same system, that would eliminate those issues. That doesn't mean that their reports would have been a hundred percent accurate or anything like that, but, but a lot of those issues that resolve revolve around the, the changes, uh, not the collections and distributions, but the changes that come through the system. And I apologize for that. I didn't foresee, see this. I took them for their word that they would have, uh, these things fixed and, and obviously that didn't happen and.
Are they here today still working on it?
They're still working on it. They've been here since Monday and. And obviously, they know there's some deficiencies if it takes them, if they have somebody working on it for four days and, and hasn't been able to balance it yet, so.
I think we can, excuse me, do the letter, you know, contingent if they get the numbers by the thirtieth. That's what you said, right? Yeah. Then let's proceed with it, but if they don't, then we can, I guess we gotta figure out what we wanna do from there.
So can you reread the motion?
To approve the management representation letter, uh, contingent upon receipt of the annual settlement by June thirty.
If we do not have it by then, we'll have to come back and it'll be the same letter, but the dates won't change.
And then what is, how does that affect us going?
Let me see that.
Forward on giving them thirty days, the Williams Keepers, and we gotta, I mean.
At this point, the, the timeline is for the extensions for the reporting for the cops.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the last week until then.
I, I think that Williams Keepers, they said if they got an annual settlement today, they could turn around financial statements by Monday. So I think they need four days, you know, to turn it around, but when we actually get a balanced annual settlement, I don't know when that's gonna be.
I have my first at ninety days.
I'm fine with that.
I can imagine it would be ninety, but.
I'd rather be on the high.
I'd rather be on the high side than, than have to go back.
Do we have to put a number of days in there?
From what I understand.
Yeah, and we have to, we have to give them an estimate when we anticipate having it, the audit report.
I'll confirm that with Joy again.
I, I would rather have, I'd rather say ninety days and get it to, get it out in thirty than say thirty days and go back and say, uh, we gotta go a little longer.
This is on the event letter.
Yeah. And I don't think we have to vote that. That's just one of those things. We have to do it. I mean, that's.
I know.
Yeah, that's just a notice that has to go out. So.
Good.
All right, all those in favor of signing the management rep letter contingent upon receiving the annual settlement by thirty June, say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Okay.
So what do we do with DevNet then? Again, I apologize, uh.
Well, we beat up on you, Larry, but, I mean, you've done a good job and you've worked really hard and, and, and your staff is really diligent down there and they do a great job. And I don't, I mean, I don't want our griping to be a reflection on you or your staff because you guys, you guys do a great job down there. You didn't know what was gonna happen. Um, this is a software issue. This is the problem with software. Um, vendors promise, vendors rarely deliver. So do we send them a letter? That would be my preference.
Should we wait till the thirtieth?
Yeah, we would wait till the thirtieth. Similar day, say if you don't have it by the thirtieth, this is affecting us, you know, there's real, there's real cost there. I agree. And that's, that's more my concern and.
So what are, what's?
I think that's a good idea. We should send them a letter today. I don't know what it should say exactly. Saying, be advised that if you cannot complete whatever. Work with Kristen on what the magic words are.
Well, really today is the, is the deadline.
Today's the drop dead day.
Williams Keepers really needs that two days to test the annual settlement in case there's any changes to the financial statements. I mean, they've given us draft financials, but they're waiting on that opinion until they get that settlement. So they need that two days. Really today was their hard deadline.
Then we need to get a letter saying if they don't have it resolved by today, that we will hold them liable for any and all costs. I can give you the email addresses. And, and that we will not pay any additional payments until they solve the problem. I mean, who do you know that you need to talk to and go above their head?
Email sufficient on something like that.
I'd give to Larry. You've been there. Attach it.
Yes, right.
I've, I've, I've.
Do it overnight or something.
I've already emailed the president of the company several times. But it's gotta get to, they gotta get it today or it's, you know. I mean, they're at the conferences all the time and this. So email it, fax it, then send it. Anybody calls and says, well, how did they do, you know? I agree. Definitely go a different way. Ben, I think that needs to get out now. Or if they get it fixed, it can change everything. Get started on it. That way, we'll still be here and we can all say yay and get it done.
I need names and all that.
Michael Gentry is the president of the company.
Well, get, get, I would suggest get the letter, body of the letter put together.
I gotcha.
So that we can approve it before we all run off to the four winds. Even then sticking names and stuff in it can be done once we all prove it. Send a mean letter saying, look, this is, this is gonna affect us. Not necessarily so much right now as it could, you know, two, three, four, five years. Yeah. Okay, did I get you what you needed?
Thank you.
Thanks, Larry. Thanks, sorry, Larry. Wait. Well, still good seeing you. It's good for us to see you. I'm not so sure you were happy to be seen. You brought Carol along, so we wouldn't let, yell at him, you know, if we wouldn't.
I tried to send her up by herself. She wouldn't, she wouldn't go for that.
Wow, we didn't make you cry. You're all right. Speaking of computer programs, does your computer program not have spell check?
Did I send this spell check?
Oh my God, there's all kinds of them in there.
I'm getting ready to go to OneNote, so I went to turn it in.
Okay, I like it. I thought this was a Word document, these drafts. I like Kristen Bearhorst, B-E-A-R. Where is Bear? She leave? She's got a new nickname, Bear. All right, next item on the agenda is approval of JAG grant program agreement between Jeff City and Cole County. And I asked Greg to be here so he can explain it.
It's, uh, a pocket of federal money that comes to municipal and county, um, agencies. And there are, ours has been set up, uh, and, and apparently it's an irrevocable setup, uh, with, where we do it jointly with the city. And we get somewhere between thirty-five and forty percent, depends on the year. And our intent, there's, it's very limited what you can give. We're replacing some old tasers this year.
Okay. I don't have any questions. You got anything, Greg?
I was just reading through it here a little bit, so.
I entertain a motion. I entertain a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Jeff City and Cole County on the JAG grant program.
So moved. Second.
Motion second call, roll.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes.
Yes.
Our roll call, though, that motion is approved, contract stays approved. Thank you, Greg, for coming over and explaining it. I would not have been able to do that, so.
I, I definitely enjoyed watching somebody else deal with computers.
Enjoy someone else's pain.
You know, you need to be thankful it wasn't yours at that moment.
Just don't, don't go ask for people's cell phones, Greg.
You know.
You saw the Supreme Court ruling yesterday, I'd say.
And, and I'm, I'm one of the ones who are rejoicing over it. I've never understood why going through your cellphone was search incident to arrest. Made no sense to me.
And just for, for the record, the Supreme Court threw out the recess appointments today.
Really?
Found that the president had no authority to do those, and just threw out the Massachusetts 35-foot buffer around abortion clinics. Both unanimous opinions.
Both of which I, not that it matters, but I concur with them.
Which means the last two opinions that are out there include Hobby Lobby.
Yeah, and we still don't know. And I know where I side there, too.
Yeah, me, too. All right. Do we have anything else to come before the commission? Debbie?
I have one question.
No.
EMS. EMS.
Yes.
Fixed the, the F, F, and E. You guys agreed that the furniture would go to both of those vendors, and Jennifer's working on that to get you some pricing. Now, there's some other things that they talked about, which is the electronic stuff, refrigerator stove. Would you like that bid? Would you like us to spread that around the county? How would you like us to handle that? And here is the list. We have the microwave, the stove, the dishwasher, ice maker, washer and dryer, TVs, and DVR, DVD.
Who's going to bid it if we bid appliances?
Somebody from out of town. Let's be honest.
I've just seen spread it around, call around, get best prices, recognize that we have the.
Can we?
The dollar amount limits.
The package together and call, I'm just going to make up names, ABC Appliances, and then, hell, I don't care, Sears. I've, you know.
Sears, Coleman.
Built enough houses, I can, I've shopped around. You can get a hell of a deal on appliance packages. You can go to Sears Contracting and get a hell of a deal on it.
As long as we stay under the limits.
I think that's fine. Let's do that.
I'm fine. I mean, I'd like to see what all they're looking to buy, but.
And I want to see what the price is going to be, because if I go to.
Before we go buy stuff, I want to, I want to see it, so.
Want to see the, what the prices are?
No, I mean, just.
Does they have ice maker, you know, the automatic cup?
Speaking of that out there, did you go out there and look at that sweating? That room? I went out there, and the unit that we were building the ambulance part in was not sweating.
Right.
Because we covered up those dampers.
Right.
Or whatever. So I told Greg, I said, or now I was talking to shirts. I said, just have Greg get a ladder and put some insulation in there and cover it up like we did the other ones, because that's. Oh, well, they're, they were, yeah, they were having, I'm pretty sure. He said, well, they're having so-and-so bid capping it, or what? I was like, I want to see the bid before we do it, because it would cost more than 100 bucks. There's no reason to do it. I'll get the ladder, you go get the insulation.
Insulation and duct tape.
Yeah, that's what I said, so.
Does paper hold no water?
Yeah, papers are very absorbent.
Boxes? I'm surprised those boxes weren't in worse shape than what they were.
Papers are very absorbent.
Very humid in there. But that room is basically, air ties on those vents would be closed up, so if we get it.
Then we could dehumidify it, we wouldn't have a problem.
Yeah.
I agree. Works for me.
And then speaking of Greg, what did, did we talk about subbing out the cleaning services before? I thought we talked.
No, I think we talked about hiring temps. I don't know that we ever talked about subbing.
Because.
We'd have to go bid it. We do that.
Cleaning service.
We'd have to bid it.
Okay. Well, I was wondering why we could maybe look at doing that and take the, just the cleaning part off of their laps, and they can take care of actual maintenance stuff.
I think it came down to back when is the security of the buildings, having people in here you didn't know, and they would do it at night.
I was curious about that.
And so many of those cleaning services, they flop employees just constantly.
Well, they clean a lot of the state office buildings, and so that's what I, I figured there was a security issue, and, you know, obviously, certain areas, we want more control over.
They're cleaning the jail.
So.
And they do a lot of their cleaning themselves, but they do the maintenance of the jail.
I, I mean, I think getting somebody temporarily from CNS to cover the load makes sense, or, you know.
I thought that was a good idea.
But I think, you know, we're going to have to sit down, figure it. Sure. It's a budget discussion, really. It's not even really a personnel discussion, it's a budget discussion.
He has another one coming Monday, so hopefully.
That'll be good.
Well, he's going to check on, you know, what comparable pay is to, where did they go? Did they both go to work for the state or city or something? I mean, we lose road and bridge guys to the city, you know, probably more than anywhere else.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Hey, we've got one more thing. I received the audit report from Missouri River Region Library. Their 2013 audit report. They got theirs done on time.
I just got a text from Greg.
If you would, if you would record that in a minute.
Vince are done at EMS. Thinking the devil.
So mostly, I'm okay with this. I got a little bit of a problem with seven televisions.
I assume that's, I'd be curious to know where those are going.
Yeah. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with one 50-inch TV and a DVD player, but I want to know where these other six 32-inch televisions are going. And then the only other thing would be, I think that we get one washer and dryer, and then they see how much they use that.
I agree.
And.
They may need more. Don't get me wrong, but.
Yeah, I don't know. But, I mean, I don't, I don't really think that they're cooking out there. I don't really know why they need two refrigerators. But, I mean.
I think the fridge, I think the fridges make sense because a lot of people bring their stuff in.
And that's fine.
They do 24s, so they bring in a fair amount of stuff. The fridges that are out there frequently have been.
And I don't disagree with that, but I, I do see them stopping at their gas stations and.
They do that, too.
And.
They spend most of their time in the base.
Right.
When they're not on the road.
Okay.
Basically, shop around, look, get prices, bring it back, go and see what they kind of look like. And then find out the location of the six, and they only need one washer and dryer.
I mean, I'm not putting televisions in their bunk rooms.
I agree. Totally.
If they need, if they need to be in there, they need to be sleeping.
They may need a TV in a conference room, because I think there's a conference room in there, maybe, in the plans. I can see putting a TV in the conference room. That does make some sense to me, training, that kind of stuff. But I agree, bunk rooms, bunk rooms are for sleeping. They're not to lay on the bed and watch TV. I don't put TVs in my kids' room either.
Yeah. I mean, if they're getting paid to work, they can be out there washing that.
You got TVs in the kids' room?
Ambulance or whatever.
All right. I entertain a motion, unless there's other things to come before the commission, I entertain a motion to stay in recess. So moved.
Second.
Do you have something else, Debbie?
I just wanted to know if you guys wanted to review that sales tax thing, or if you had a chance to look at that spreadsheet I gave you.
I'm sorry, I didn't look at it yet.
Okay.
What did we, what were we looking at?
Yeah, what did we have left? I was trying, I was looking through that, too, and it looked like we had 199,000 left or something.
We're looking at doing the file store checking for Donald Alz, is that what brought it up?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Was it the cameras that I heard?
No, the cameras.
You had the cameras in there, I thought. You had 30,000 in there or something for us.
I did melt that down to 25, because that's what I.
Hi, Judge.
Can I say this? Well, I see. We went over to the federal courthouse and, and the architect, Carrie.
You went to the federal courthouse to meet with the architect?
Well, we went, and he wanted to see, because we were talking about.
Oh, he wanted to see, oh, okay.
Yeah, so we did, we looked, yeah.
We have a strict budget. We're, we have to watch the budget.
No, no, it really wasn't, I know.
I know how much they spent in the federal courthouse.
No, it was more, it was more the logistics of how many steps.
How much room.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, so, but we, John and I met with him on Friday, and then yesterday I went over there with him to kind of walk through some of the costs.
Good. Thank you.
I don't know if that's legal to say if, if not, if you're.
No, it's good.
No, it's, I mean, it's good that he's going over there and, you know, going through the effort to see.
He had a lot of good ideas that I was saying, all the way. I said I wanted that big pantry. There's a lot there.
I know. And they didn't mandate that the elected officials use the office space, you get that? So there, there are two US senators' office suites in there and a congressperson's office suite, on the assumption that they would be in the federal, that's the federal building, for lack of a term. Well, they, instead of saying, here's your office space, you have to be in it, they said, here's your office space.